Call to order our June 7th Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. Our invocation and pledge of allegiance today is by Vice Chairman Wayne A. Cox.
Let's bow our hands, please. Dear my Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you give us the knowledge and wisdom to make the decisions for the betterment of Wayne County. We ask that you be with our state leaders, not national leaders, to conduct ourselves professionally and make the right decisions for the citizens of this great country of ours. We ask that you be with our men and women in uniform. We ask that you be with our first responders. We ask you to be with our educational system, local and state, to educate our children to be future leaders of this country. We ask you to just be with all of us as we make these decisions. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next item here is approval of the minutes. I need a motion for approval of our May 17th meeting. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Being none. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Adjustments of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do want to add a proclamation as number 15 under consent, Juneteenth National Freedom Day, as recommended by Commissioner Williams. Okay. Oh, and also, we would change, I'm sorry, number nine as well, motion to appoint Commissioner A. Cox, change that to Commissioner Williams to represent the board at the county assembly day. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
All right, a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Special presentations.
We do have Dr. Ed Crum here today. Dr. Crum is the president of Mount Olive University of Mount Olive. Excuse me. I apologize on that. But it's been here about a year, a year now, and it's just been like 30, but has just done a fabulous job and has really been a true partner with the county. And we do appreciate the work that the university does and your support of the county as well. So we appreciate you being here.
He's homegrown.
He's a homegrown person, so.
You're homegrown, so.
Well, you know, that always makes you feel better anyway. But it is a pleasure to be here, and again, I'll be very, very brief. And I said this last time, every time I stand before the commissioners, I feel like I need to be asking for about $60 million. So let's just start with that since he's leaving. That's right, yeah, that's right. But it is a privilege to be here, and I do stand before you and hold another light. You know, last time I was here, I think I had just been, I had, well, I started at university in an interim position, tried to navigate this whole COVID thing. And my wife says I failed retirement because I agreed to stay on in a full-time capacity, and that's still a conversation that we have at the house from time to time. But it has been a delight, and she and I view it as a mission because it is a part of our church. The last time I was here, I told you about a couple of things that were going on that we were hoping that we would get. So my goal is to come back every few months, six months or so, and just make sure you don't forget that we're sitting down there and that we're a vital part of this county. Last time I shared with you that we had put into, we were putting in a CM lab, it's about a million-dollar CM lab for nursing. Again, I would encourage you to go down and view that thing, and I think I shared with you, we have mannequins down there that if you can do it, they can do it. They give birth, they bleed, they talk to you, they sweat. I tell people, we got dummies down there a whole lot smarter than I am. But it's a fascinating, fascinating lab, and we have been approved for the pre-licensure and nursing program, which is a huge step for us. Look for more information on nursing. We have, I think, of course, Ag is close to my heart. I started in my professional career as a vocational agriculture teacher after dad. And you know, our Ag program at University of Mount Olive continues to grow, and I think we are being recognized by the state. Last time I told you, we were hoping to give about close to $2 million for our Ag program. We have two farms at university. One is dedicated to crop science and those type of things. The new farm on Shady Grove, Road, I think that's it, is going to be dedicated to animal science, and we've received almost $2 million from the state legislature to put up an animal science facility, and we think that's going to be real big for us down there. We're getting a lot of attention from around the state and other states, and also a lot of good things. We just finished, and don't ask me any questions about this one, because I promise you, I do not know the answer to it. But our aviation program, you know, we started a flight school down a few years ago. We've just got clearance to receive our 141 status. That's what I know nothing about, other than it will allow us to really, it's for flying complex aircraft and big-time stuff, you know? And so we're excited about what that might do for us down that way. We're looking at growing our public health services, but right now, we're just sort of on hold. I will tell you, we have challenges. You know, we sold the new freshman class coming in. We sold tuition and room and board rates, and we've just been notified that our food is going to be at 9%. You know, that's a pretty big hit, and there's going to also be additional surcharges on fuel. So as good as things are on one side, we have our challenges. Well, I am pleased to tell you, you know, there's 37 private universities in the state of North Carolina. We rank at the very bottom in what it costs to go there, which is good. And a lot of those at the top are really struggling. You know, we talk to those folks quite often, but I am pray force because our TRED tuition is the highest it's been in several, several years. If all those folks show up, and then we got to make sure they don't, they stay in good academic standing and stay with us. That's TRED students, and our online numbers are really up as well. So a lot of great news going on at the University of Mount Olive, and I just want you to know that we're down there and that we feel like we're a vital part of this county and look forward to great things happening. One thing that I'm very proud of, and a little bit out of context from my public school days, but we have completely revised our religious program down there, and we have a department now of worship and ministry. You know, obviously, we're part of the Free Will Baptist denomination, but we are, we have, are bridging gaps among many denominations and trying to grow our entire framework to spread the good news of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. So I'm excited about that part as a personal piece as far as leading to private universities. So any questions at all that you might have for us? Any extra money you got? Well, thank you so much. It's been great, a short time that I've been able to work with the county manager and look forward to a long relationship. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
But we do appreciate you staying in touch with us because, you know, sometimes we have businesses and organizations that, you know, but we appreciate you coming and keeping us updated on what is going on because that university is a vital part of Wayne County. We're very blessed to have educational facilities that we do have in Wayne County.
And one of the things, you are leading us in economic development. That's a big key piece of this. So thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. You know, it's sad to say that we, my family's been a part of the Free Will Baptist denomination all my life, but I had no clue the number of people that come to Johnston County on the first day, I mean Johnston County, sorry about that, Wayne County.
Uh-oh, slipped out.
Y'all just, I went my 20 million ass to 10. The number of people who are on that campus when students move into school was unbelievable. I mean, it is a fascinating amount of cars, and those folks don't buy gas somewhere. And you know, it's a lot that come in, and I had no clue until I had opportunity to experience. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, appoint a committee.
Yes, sir, we have several this morning, and these come to you in a form of a motion.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Joanna Johnston to the Pipeville Planning Board, recommended by the Pipeville Town Manager.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Motion to appoint Jamie Levingood to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Motion to reappoint Evan Horner and Willie Walker to Wayne County Council on Aging.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
Motion to appoint Michael Dawson and Matthew Harrison to the ABC Board.
Okay, motion on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
We had, oh, excuse me. Before, you know, I sat on the appointment committee, we had two people last year that we said that we would take into consideration this year because you didn't put them on the board and you put Bill Pate on the board. Now, I'm not hearing anything from those about those two people, and I'm pretty sure this board is still going to end up lacking some diversity, and I have an issue with that. We spoke about that last time, and this time, this board needs to have some diversity on it. And, you know, we keep turning the wheel, doing the same thing because we like certain people, and we want certain people to be in certain places and charge of certain things. So therefore, I'm questioning these two people that you have on this board, when they apply, why those other two names aren't having come up in everything else. So I don't like this at all. So can somebody from the appointment committee, please, give me some information on that?
I don't have those.
Can we postpone that until our next meeting?
We actually have a motion, and it's on the floor. And with that in mind...
And I can assure you that we are looking to those conversations.
I mean, looking into them is not good enough. That's not good enough, sir. We already talked about this. We talked about this last year. We talked about it last year, and here we go with the same old thing again and again and again and again. There's been no change with this board, and it's the same old mess over and over. And therefore, like I said, once again, it's ridiculous that a county with, that's a diverse county, doesn't have a diverse board.
Well, so you got to have diversity, do you have to appoint, apply?
Okay, and someone applied last year that should have gotten appointed then, but now all of a sudden, their name isn't even brought up in conversation. I just sat in the meeting the other day, and I'm pretty sure that one of those people that you're, that you're putting up there just applied within the last week.
No, they had, they were, they applied a year or so ago.
Okay, so why weren't their names up there last year when we, when we talked about it? Because I don't remember their names.
They were.
Okay, I need to see that. I want all that information then, because you have those names, but you don't have the other people's names that applied last year. Readily convenient. That's amazing.
I don't have those names, so.
Okay, okay, we've got a motion on the floor.
I mean, Commissioner Williams may, can make another motion to have it, because we need to look at this. Wrong is wrong, right is right. You're trying to fast-forward this and push it along because it's what you want, and that's not right.
I'm just simply the chair, and a motion has been made from the, from the appointment committee, and I'm just acting on the motion.
And what were the two names again?
Michael Dawson and Matthew Harrison.
Will you withdraw your motion, sir? Until our next meeting?
No, I'm not going to withdraw the motion.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Okay, any more from the appointment committee?
Reappoint Gray Riker.
Barbara A. Cox. Yes, in favor or against?
Reappoint Gray Riker, Chadwick Coop of Coker, and Paul King to the Wayne County Executive Jetport Commission.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Okay, anymore?
Nope, that's it, sir.
All right, at this point, we are going to open up a public hearing to receive comments regarding the sale of county-owned industrial shell building located at 400 Chavon Court, Goldsboro, North Carolina, 27534, and being further described as Lot 8 in Platte Cabinet L., Slide 37-E of the Wayne County Register. The Board of Commissioners will consider a sale of the property for $2 million to, pronounce that name for me.
Hasekawa.
Hasekawa, Custom Processing Services LLC. Each speaker will have a time limit of four minutes. So I open for public comment.
No one signed up.
Okay, well, then, no reason to wait any longer then, is it?
No.
All right, since no one signed up for any comment on that, I am closing the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Do you need a motion?
To approve the sale. So move.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to complete the sale. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed?
And, Mr. Chair, just want to let you know, once the sale is completed, you know, that will free up those funds to begin looking at an additional shell building for the county. So that'll be a project that will be coming up as well, because that's one thing that we are lacking in the county is product for new industries. So you'll be able to take those proceeds and reinvest those back into another shell building, hopefully on this pad-ready site that we're going to hopefully approve later on in the budget or the agenda.
Okay, 9:30 public hearing, 9:30 is not here, so I'm going to move on to unfinished business. We need a motion to approve the recommendation for changes for county payroll schedule. Ms. Hanukkah.
And I appreciate that. We have in your agenda packet, kind of the reasonings why we're looking at that. We have surveyed our staff as well, but this would change from a monthly payroll to a bi-weekly payroll. This does not give a specific timeframe, but this states that the board is willing to allow us to move forward with the process. So with your approval, we will start the process and move forward. And again, we have surveyed staff. We got about 60% response, and it was about 60, 40 for changing to bi-weekly and 40 against.
Okay. Any comments on that?
Is the staff comfortable with making a change?
Yes, sir. It is going to require a good bit of planning and just logistically laying it out, lots of education to our employees. So that's what we want to take some time to formulate and present to you all before we have a good date in mind.
Is this going to create any other positions?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to approve the recommendation.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. All right, still at 9:30.
I don't believe that was unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, on the consent agenda.
Again, we went over the consent agenda in our pre-agenda meeting, again, with the change in number nine from Commissioner Barbara A. Cox to Commissioner Williams, and the adding of the Juneteenth proclamation as number 15.
Okay, do I hear a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda with the changes, signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
Still got minutes and 30 seconds.
Okay, we're moving on to new business.
All right, under new business, discussion of and motion to approve the North Carolina Southeast Product Development Fund application for a pad-ready site funding. And again, as we talked about in the pre-agenda, is the North Carolina Southeast recently received $5 million for its 18 counties to look at some product development for each county. The Wayne County portion of that is $284,000, and if we do receive that, we would like to look at it as far as getting a pad-ready site ready, and now we can also look at the pad-ready part along with a shell building as well. So, but we need to approve this resolution and support so we can draw down those funds from the North Carolina Southeast Commission.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. You're not going, I thought Barbara was going to read the...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem.
Yeah, switch water.
And in discussion on that, we currently have a pad-ready site that has already been developed.
Right.
So this will be an additional.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There is a pad-ready site being almost complete at Parkies that's been done by WCDAs.
Yeah.
And so this will be through the county, so this will be a county project.
Okay, and as I drove by there the other day, it seems as if we've got soybeans that are planted on that site. Is that correct? Would you all check into that? I believe so. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve any further discussion on that. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand.
Agenda.
Yeah. All right, we got that vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. God, I mean, we're moving right along here today, aren't we?
Stalled for two minutes.
Stalled for two minutes? Well, that clock up there says 9:30.
And I apologize, Ms. Barbara, I was, I thought they were waiting for somebody.
As long as it gets sunny, I have no problem.
Did we, how many people did we have sign up for public comment?
Zero.
Zero?
So we ain't got none either.
Yes, sir. But we can acknowledge Mr. Ray Trail if you want.
Just wanted to bring some teens out here to observe.
Well, that's great.
If you will come.
Come to the podium.
Do you mind if he does that for just a minute? Is that okay?
Yeah, yes, please.
That way they can hear you because they can't.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, pleasure to be here, here on behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Wayne County. Wanted to bring some teenagers here to observe y'all. Y'all know the County Commissioners Summit is coming up in August, so we plan on attending and trying to get some, I think they only allowing us like two, two teens per county, so waiting on permission to, you know, grant about three more bodies to go along with us or whatever. So just here, letting them soak it in, and we are scheduled to be here on the 21st to see y'all again, and most likely they'll speak that time when they come up. So just here, you know, shaking the dust off and...
Great. Can you introduce the kids that are with you?
Yes, that'd be great.
Y'all want to come and introduce, sir?
Come on here.
We got silence. See, this one we got to get out. This one, this is dust we got to shake off.
Don't be bashful, we don't bite.
We got Matthew Berger, we got Christopher McKinney, we got De'ala Middleton, and we got Maya. So we here representing Boys and Girls Club, Wayne County, Goldsboro Unit as well. So I appreciate y'all for having us, and we'll see y'all on the 21st again.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for what you're doing, and thank y'all for being here. I mean, y'all are, y'all are our future. I mean, really, I mean, and get involved, get involved.
Yeah, so I know the youth summit been shut down for about, what, one or two years now? So last time we was here, we got some teenagers, I think that group, mostly all of them went D1 colleges, and we getting, I got feedback from a couple of them, and so hopefully we'll get that group picture with y'all next go-around when we come back again or whatever.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And basically, if you've forgotten, at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, they have a teen summit as well, and so they invite teens from each county, and they go through a lot of different training, a lot of different team building. But again, it's an opportunity as well. I think the last morning, there's a breakfast with the county board commissioners, so hopefully these are the kids that will be there, and we can eat some bacon and eggs with.
Oh, yeah. And I believe they actually act on the second day, they act as county commissioners too, so.
Well, y'all better bring y'all leadership skills because I didn't see one person come up, and I'm sure we got some, some good leaders there. So, but you got to, you got to act like a leader, you can't be a follower. All right? We really appreciate y'all coming today.
Thanks so much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, I think at this point, we can move to our public hearing. So I am opening a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposed budget for Wayne County for the fiscal year beginning July 1 of '22. Each speaker will have a time limit of four minutes. Ms. Hanukkah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Four minutes.
I'll let...
Four minutes.
All right. See, there we go. Wanted to kind of give you an update of where we're at, and number one, I want to thank our budget team of Allison and Chip and Janice and Ryan and Noel and Ann and whom am I missing? Ginger. There's been a lot of work that's been put into this budget. But if you remember when I made the budget presentation three weeks ago, we were asking for a two-and-a-half cent, or excuse me, a three-cent increase. And most of that at the time was going to just personnel cost. But what we did is, I appreciate the work that the board of commissioners did, but also staff did as well. Going back and relooking at some of our numbers, one of the things that we made a priority in this year's budget was our employees and making sure that we got to a medium level with respect to our salaries. The big issue we've been faced with is the competition from our surrounding counties. Our surrounding counties have really taken the lead as far as trying to get their employees up. Those are who we are competing with. We want to make sure that we keep the best and brightest here in Wayne County. So that's why we really made really the focus of this budget, our employees. So in going back through the workshops that we've had and going back and looking at some of the adjustments in the budget, looking at some salary adjustments, we were able to do full increases. We talked about some partial implementation, especially for health and DSS. We went back and we adjusted some of our revenue, and we were able to get everybody in really full. So I don't think we got full on EMS. We did a huge hit on EMS, but we've hit EMS hard over the last couple of years. But everybody else, as far as the recommendation from HR, we did get in full. But by doing that, that meant a two-and-a-half cent salary or tax increase. One of the things that has happened in the last week is, we've talked about is capital projects. We talked about the cost of schools, we talked about the cost of DSS. If you remember, last year, we raised taxes specifically for debt service for capital projects. With the economy that we're having now, we felt like we needed to go up another penny to cover that debt service because between fuel costs, labor costs, supply chain issues, everything that we're seeing, inflation really increasing about a percent a month, we felt like we needed to make sure that the county was in good shape to make sure that those capital projects were being able to be done, done correctly, and to be funded. So again, if you look at our tax increase that we're recommending, we are targeted two-and-a-half cents specifically for salary adjustments. And if you also look at the history of Wayne County, we haven't had a tax increase in a while for operations. We had a tax increase last year for debt service, but not for operations. So the two-and-a-half cent that we have in there, again, are for salary adjustments, and again... And again, in the last week, we added on an additional penny for debt service because we did feel like we were going to run short, especially with the increased costs that we were seeing. So.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
With making those, getting those positions close to where we are. I just, if I looked at this last few days, I couldn't figure out like, how are so many departments so far away from each other? You know, that bothered me, you know, that we have the county manager's office only 3% away, but then you have a registered Ds 45 and human resources 31. You know, what are we doing in the future to make sure that doesn't happen again? Like, even with evaluations, with employee evaluations, what are you using those for? Are employees getting raises off of those evaluations? How is all of that working? Because it's like, we're going to end up right back in this same situation at some point if something's not put in place. You know, when I was with the city, you know, you had a ranking between one and three, you know what I mean? And if you use a one, you got 1%, two, you got 2%, three, you got 3%. From my understanding, I don't know what we do here, but I don't know if we do anything. You know what I'm saying? As far as those evaluations go. But I think something needs to be put in place and put in place ASAP, because I don't want to have this same issue next year or the year after that if I'm, you know, if I'm still here whenever, you know, or for whoever's here in the future. Hopefully, one of these young men or women back here be in my position, and they can make that decision. But, you know.
One of the things that we, and you're 110% correct, we are behind. And part of it has been, there's been years that there's been no merit, 1% merit, no cost of living increase. We have been flat as far as what we have done for our employees. One of the things in the thought process now is if we can get to kind of a base median, that every third year, we're going to look at all departments on a continual rotation basis to make sure we do not get as behind as we are right now. So I do agree with you, if we can put money in next year's budget, make sure we have good merit and good cost of living. We do have good evaluations set up, but again, it's dependent upon the funding, how much we're willing to put aside for merit, and how much we're willing to put aside for cost of living. So, but we do have a good process set inside for reviews, but again, if we don't fund it, they really don't mean much.
Yeah, but I mean, saying, I think that, you know, as a board, as a county, just period, we have to put something in place, you know what I mean? Because it's just, it's just not going to work, continue going the way that we're going to. You know what I mean? I know it's a hard thing, I know it's money, but you know, if we can adjust everything else, we can just start adjusting our pay for our employees and cost of living, you know what I mean? We know everything is rising.
Yes, sir.
So why are we not looking at that?
Yes, sir. Well, and again, that's the reason why we're looking at it right now, and hopefully moving forward, we'll have it set up that every year that we do a third of our departments, and then the next year do another third, then the next year, then we can do that on a continual rotation to make sure we don't get as far behind as we are right now.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, that's fine, that's a start, you know what I mean? But I would like to see all departments on a yearly basis. I mean, you know what I mean? I know that's a cost, but if other cities and other places and counties can do it, you know, why can't we? And I know it's being done in other places, so it's a reason why we're not doing it. And that reason, to me, I don't know, we got to find that out and get that done, because it's just, it's not fair, it's not, you know, it doesn't even look good on paper, looking at some of these salaries. It's sad.
Yes, sir. I totally agree.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Again, one of the big concerns that we have, as always, is what's our general fund balance usage? And we're looking at $3.5 million to balance off the budget. And again, I always want us to look at fund balance uses as a bridge, you know, that we, you know, as Commissioner Daughery finally got me to say three weeks ago, we underestimate revenue and overestimate expenditures. So it is that bridge that we use, because we, you know, use fund balance this year on this year's budget, but we'll be in the black. So we won't be in the red, so we won't be using any of that fund balance that we projected to use. So it is that bridge that we kind of have to kind of get us to, you know, get up, make sure we have that balanced budget.
And what was the amount that we used in this year's budget?
Three.
I think it was like 3.8.
3.8?
3.8.
So, but again, we'll be in the black. We'll be in the black. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're using less this?
We are using less this year. And this is really, we have come down, as Chip likes to point out, we have come down on fund balance usage over the past years. At one time, I think we were using $5 million. But we have really whittled that down to really, this is a very, on a $200 million budget, this is a very manageable level. Again, one of the things that we are doing, we're putting a lot of money into capital, and we are using ARP funds that we have set aside. These are the projects that we've identified that are allowable. But again, this is not part of the 10 million for revenue replacement. This is part of the $14 million that we have for ARP projects. So we went ahead, and again, the board approved of the ambulances, so those are in process. But there's really some necessary equipment that we have needed in the county, and this is a really good opportunity for us to get the capital equipment for our employees. Again, we are also using some, we set aside $10 million on our unappropriated fund balance this year. If you remember, we had a large increase in unappropriated fund balance that we said we're designating $10 million of that for capital projects. So we're using $1 million of that for now, or $1,62,000 in the upcoming. We need to replace boardroom, audio, voting machines, there's a couple of roofs we need to do, HVAC, the timekeeping system, and some software upgrades. Again, these were projects that would not be funded under ARP, and that's the reason why we put them under the capital reserve. Again, everybody wants to know where we're at. This is where the surrounding tax rates are. Even if we go to 74, we are still adequate, not adequate, we're still in the ballpark of our surrounding counties. We're still even on the low end for our surrounding counties. Again, public schools, we have increased their general operating funds by $427,000. We've added the $2 million in small capital, which is their sales tax. But one of the things that we have done, and we've kind of committed to, is the $600,000 for the new STEM school that will be on base at Seymour Johnson. Again, half of the kids will be Air Force kids, half of them will be through the lottery through Wayne County Public Schools.
Is that recurring, 600?
That is a recurring cost from now on. Yes, sir.
And that's a, that's a big problem. It's a big problem. I mean, we have schools in repair that we need repaired, we can't even get repaired. But we're spending that kind of money out there on base when we have a school that's only 50 feet from the base. So now you're further separating kids and giving kids a better learning experience than what you're giving other kids. You know, if you look up at, look on the DOD, you know, it's a reason why it's never been a school on their base. They never need it. There's not enough kids out there on their base, the military kids, to provide a school on their base. You know? And that's just a fact. I don't know where we're getting this thing from, that they want a school on base, and we have to do this to keep the base there. It's all a complete lie. It's nowhere, no nothing you can find anywhere. The Department of DOD said, okay, you got to, we need a school on that base. The percentages are too low. You can actually look on their site, and it says, because schools, the base is so close to public schools, inner-city public schools, that there's no need for a school on that base. But here we go, investing in a building, investing in all of this, that we don't, that it's not ours, that they can take back at any time they want to, because it's the military, no different than the city of Goldsboro did with those soccer fields. So now the kids in the inner city that I represent will get less again. Will get less of an opportunity to probably even go to this school because of the challenges and the problems that it presents. Then we're going to have an issue, we already got an issue with buses. The cost. We already said we're struggling for money around here, raising taxes and everything goes. We're building a new school that's costing us almost 70% more than what we expected. And it's just sad. I mean, you know what I mean? It's just sad, that the objective that we're using and the scare tactic that we're using to even put this school on base. It's like we're putting a private school on base, which is, could be ending up being illegal, once some certain people look at it.
Right.
It's just terrible. And I've done all this research, and I can back it with facts. Can't nobody in here backing with facts that the DOD said they want a school on their base. And I know that for a fact, and I'm willing to say that right here. I don't care about the Roosevelt Group, I don't care about friends of Seymour, what they say, because I know that they can't back it with facts. They can't back it with a written document. I can back all my numbers. A low percentage of kids. We're not Fort Bragg, we're not Campbell Jim. Forty-eight percent of their kids, you know what I mean, in the county are military, or 28%. Not even nowhere close to that. So it's just something to think about, and it's just, it's sad, but here we go, $300,000 to repair schools that needed to be repaired that were built 60, 70 years ago. But we're going to invest $600,000 a year out there on base.
Yeah, the $600,000 that we have is really not into the building. It is more for the soft costs, it is for the teachers, it's for the principals, it is for the utilities, it's for cleaning those type issues that we would do at any other school.
But correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Foster, your point is that $600,000 will recurring costs?
It is. It is.
No matter what it's for, it's $600,000 will return costs.
It is a recurring cost. And then we do have the public school funding, North Carolina Education Lottery Funds. We have that been increased by $300,000. Again, that will be allocated equally to Goldsboro High, Diller Middle, and Brogdon Middle. So for the $300,000 that we're getting above and beyond our normal lottery dollars, we will be putting that specifically for those three schools. And again, we will continue prior to your increase for their.
Just tell me one second here, can we guarantee that $300,000 is going to go to those three schools?
By allocating it in the budget ordinance, we have that control. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what the resolution also states, correct?
The resolution was more for new school, or the $20 million, but this is a different pot of money. This is that small capital or renovation from the lottery that comes to us that we And Allison, if I say something wrong, make sure I'm.
No, before we actually draw down the lottery funds, it does require our signature by both chairman, by both chairman of the Wayne County School Board and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners.
But we are specifically allocating those dollars for those three schools.
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
Again, we went over this at the original budget presentation. There are just some basic costs that have increased, a part of the cost of doing business. We had a 60% increase in our health insurance. We are self-funded, that's $1 million. Our retirement contribution went up 1.18%, and that's mandatory from the state of North Carolina. You know, we have, you know, close to 950 full-time employees, so that's, that 1% adds up to a lot, that's $630,000. And again, that's on top of the $412,000 that we did last year. So we've had some mandatory increases, you know, that, again, are just part of the cost of doing business.
And if I could comment on that, go back to that slide. If you'll add those two numbers in a little over a year, that's over a million dollars in increased cost to the county that we have to contribute to the local government retirement contribution. That's more than a penny right there.
And I'll thank you for that in a couple of years.
You will.
I'll thank you for that in a couple of years.
Well, it's, are we anticipating another increase next year?
It depends. I know that was a two-year process, but it just depends on the actuary look, and so it's, yeah, it's a huge, it's a huge cost for us.
Okay.
And just keep in mind, the key word there was, all of this is mandated on us, we don't have any control over this.
Honecker, is this the price for the sheriff department too? I know usually the local law enforcement, you know, their rate's a little different.
Right, I think we included everybody in this. We kind of lumped everybody in. Yes, ma'am.
That's not the percentage for them, but it is included in the estimate.
Yes, included in the estimate.
I knew they had a different percentage.
Yes, ma'am, they do. I think they're at over 13% now.
And again, as I mentioned early, employee salary increases, and this is where our focus was this year. One of the things we felt like we needed to do was raise our part-time employees up to $15 an hour. You know, when McDonald's and everybody else is paying $15 an hour, we felt like that we had to be there as well. But if you add fringes in all funds, and that's Jeffport, and that is also landfill certifications that we have, that we pay an increase for, our new positions is $5.4 million in new salary increases, which is huge. But again, hopefully, and going back to Commissioner Foster's statement, we're going to be able to get to a point where the increases will not be as large on an annual basis, that we'll be able to keep up with it and keep up with the change in the market and the change in workers' compensation.
So let me ask you a question. So everybody in the county that's not a part-time employee is making that or more per hour?
If I could also comment on this. Your recommendation has hit us pretty hard in regards to a tax increase, on top of a tax increase of last year. And we worked hard through this budget process to find ways to reduce our spending, so the 5.4 million, we didn't have to raise taxes by that amount.
Right.
To give an example, the 5.4 million would equate to 6 cents in property tax increase. And we have found savings elsewhere to bring that down to two and a half cents just for the employee increase.
Yes, sir.
Now, there was a one penny you recommended over and beyond that for these capital projects. But I want to commend you and staff for working and finding ways to find savings elsewhere to minimize this 6-cent tax increase that would be required to fulfill that 5.4.
I will say this, and a lot of thanks to this, and looking at our employees goes to Ginger and to Janice. Janice would come to me in the mornings and said, Craig, I prayed over this last night, and I think we've got this. So she really put her heart and soul, and Ginger did as well, to make sure that all our employees got to a level that they needed to be at. So again, it's a huge ask, it's a huge hit, but it was something we felt like we needed to do at this time, especially if you look at our surrounding counties, you know, as Dr. Crum said, you know, Johnson County went up 42% just on EMS alone. EMS alone went up 42%. And those specified skilled positions, the app can pull is shallow. So when you start. So when you start losing those people, you're in trouble, and then services start getting cut, and then you may have to cut uh, uh, shut down an ambulance, so you, you may have to shut down a station, and, and then that may increase your, your uh, call time if you have a nine-one-one call, so we don't wanna do that. We wanna make sure we're providing those services to our citizens.
Sure.
Yes.
And this, this is, this is a must, oh, you know. It's almost embarrassing what some of our employees were making, and this, I mean, this is a must, it's gotta be done. Oh, I mean, we uh, we sit up here and make, instead of us that up here and make the decisions, but really, our employees is what does the work. The employee is what makes this county move forward, it's, it's not us, we make, we make the decisions, uh, and we try to make the right decisions, but we're not perfect, we make the decision sometimes that later on we question. But uh, the backbone of Wayne County is the employees, it's, it's not the county commissioners, it's the employees and our staff. We don't, we don't go clean bathrooms, we don't go mow grass. Uh, the employees are the backbone of Wayne County, it's not the county commissioners, it's not county manager. I mean, it, the, the, the people at the bottom is what makes the county operate, you know. And we've, we've neglected them long enough, and, and I don't like property, I don't like tax increases, I mean, I pay property tax, y'all pay property tax. But, but then again, uh, the people are expecting services, and the only way that we can provide services is someone that'll pay for it. You know. But it, it's, it's way past time that we look at our employees, and I appreciate y'all's hard work. Uh, the staff, on y'all's hard work on, on making it work, you know. It's just a hurdle we gotta cross. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and again, we did talk about, uh, we did add um, um, positions. Uh, one was in solid ways for a equipment uh, operator truck driver. Again, we talked about the six new positions for EMS that we did add back in, uh, the Maxwell Center.
But, but back up to the EMS, explain the six positions, why we had to add six on, it's not just six positions, we're actually adding another whole crew on.
We're adding another crew, really, i- if you look at, at our, our, our city departments and our city substations, they're getting run to death, uh, for lack of better words, they're getting run to death. So this will allow us to have another crew uh, that can kinda share that workload. Because again, we're burning out our, our EMS employees uh, working such a high volume of calls. And, and again, when everybody's busy, you have nobody in base in case there's another call. So uh, we felt like that this was an important issue of workload, but also an important issue for services uh, for the citizens.
Expanding a little bit on that, because what is the percentage of calls within the city of Goldsboro versus the rest of the county?
Forty, forty-seven percent.
Yeah.
So the demand really-
With two stations.
It's two stations, and it, that's why it was just running to the-
It was killing, a- and we rotate our crews, but when they come, you know, to, 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 you know, inside the city on, on the stations, it's running them to death.
It's not just the, the stations that are located inside the city limits, it's the ones outside-
Right.
-that are coming in as well-
Right, that's true.
-to assist because they're busy.
Yes sir, yes sir.
And this would actually be a whole enough, whole other um, uh, scheduled person.
Yes sir, yes sir.
We've got eleven EMS stations, and we continue to have eleven stations, but we will have two crews in one station.
Yes sir.
And, 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 and part of the issue with, with the number of calls in the city is the population density, I mean, there's just, there's just more people here.
It is, yes sir. So again, the, the venue services member at the Maxwell, we were having a tough time filling that as a part-time. Uh, we took some part-time dollars to make that full-time. Uh, environmental health specialist, uh, we were running Kevin Whitley ragged with respect to uh, permits as the board saw, you know, all the different permits and, and, and lots that are being approved, and septic tanks that are being approved, that, that we really just needed that position. Uh, in the health department, also, uh, we're looking at a dentist and a hygienist. Uh, the positive thing about those two positions are, they should be revenue uh, supported. So uh, uh, revenue will uh, support and, and hopefully, and, and not hopefully, but pay for those new positions, and also an administrative uh, position out at the jetport. And then we're gonna transfer a housekeeper uh, from Kendall to the Maxwell Center, uh, to be full-time there. Uh, again, we talked about some major expenditures, uh, you know, increased sales tax owed to schools was such for requirement. We've added a hundred thousand for contingency for fuel. Uh, it may not be enough, but we added a hundred thousand, we've increased fuel for every department uh, due to the rising fuel costs, but we wanted to put some aside for contingency because we know we're probably gonna blow through that. Uh, again, we increased travel and training, uh, uh, post-COVID or pre-COVID, or COVID. We cut all travel and training by fifty percent, uh, but they're now getting more in-person, so that was uh, uh, increased back. Uh, we did, as the board is aware, we changed our security contract uh, here at the uh, courthouse, but also at the boarding building and at the county office building. Uh, again, uh, we had an increase, well, two point five million uh, with Verita, or, or for professional services. One point three million was Veritas, and that is uh, that we're, remember we're outsourcing uh, child support. Uh, salaries decreased by one point two, but that was a net of a hundred thousand. Uh, DSS has a lot of shredding they need to do, we're gonna look at options for that to see if we can, you know, buy some equipment or hire uh, instead of just contracting that out, so, but we have some money set aside for that. Uh, and again, the health department uh, did go up seven hundred as well.
What, what is that for?
A bunch of different things, um, a lot of it doing with uh, COVID.
Is it, but it's not COVID dollars, it's coming out of?
It's, it's coming out, maybe, some may be out of uh, both pots, but yeah, it's just a lot of different things in there, yes sir.
So what's the status on the COVID dollars as far as with the health department? Are they gone, decreasing, basically decreasing, or they're gonna be cut off at a certain point in time? How long are we gonna keep our, our uh, uh, vaccine?
Yeah, our vaccine center, um, uh, I'll be very honest, have not had that in-depth conversation with the health department, but we'll try to get a, an update on that.
I can't tell you that it is dropping off dramatically in regards to the usage. Uh, and at some point, we're gonna be making a decision of actually closing down that facility.
Yeah.
They're, they're at the point, they're actually calling people and asking them if they're gonna get shots.
Yeah, and, and, and testing is not like it used to be as well, so.
I'm just saying, it's probably not the best use of our funds to afford.
We'll, we'll get, we'll bring them and kinda see where we're at and come up with a plan for that. Um, and the other thing we've done is increased uh, uh, Wayne Community College uh, transfer from our, for their current expense. Uh, that increased by five percent, uh, they did ask for about a ten percent increase, uh, but we only funded them a five percent increase. Uh, but one of the things we did do is we put six hundred thousand dollars a year uh, that we put in the CIP that will add up over the next four years, uh, so that they'll be able to backfill for their new career tech building. Uh, you know, they're in the process of building a new building on campus, and once they move some of those classrooms to the new building, there'll be renovations that'll be required, and they've adjusted it, or think that that'll be about two point four million dollars. So we're kinda putting that six hundred thousand a year as quote-unquote savings uh, aside for them, so when they're ready to do the backfill for renovations, they'll have funding there.
And that will be for four years?
Yes sir.
That will be for four years, but it won't be until four years that they-
Yes sir, yes sir, yes sir. We, yeah, that's why we're, 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 we're kinda spreading it out a little bit. So that way, when it comes and they need that funding for backfill, you don't have to take it from your unappropriated fund balance, it'll be appropriated fund balance.
And just, and also keep in mind, you know, this is a big figure for the college, but keep in mind, the community colleges is, are set up, uh, they operate a little different from you, other state-supported schools and, and your private colleges. Uh, there's programs that are, students can go to Wayne Community College. Basically, with the programs law, you can basically go with no cost. I mean, it's, it's, it's really a greater asset to Wayne County than what a lot of people realize because it is, you can get basically almost the same education that, that, at not only Wayne Community, but all the community colleges that are across the state, uh, at a much reduced cost than what it is to go to private schools and, and the other state-supported colleges, it's uh, it, it's, it's a great benefit, especially for the, for some of the underprivileged and, and, and far as uh, staying at home and going to school, it's uh, we've got to continue to, to support our college as other counties have got to keep supporting their, their community colleges because it's, it's a, it's a great asset to Wayne County.
It is, and this is one of those things that a lot of people kind of, it's under the radar, and people don't recognize, the county is responsible for the facilities at the community college. Um, now, we've done a great job in regards, and they have, in regards to getting grants and, and state support and so forth, which minimized our uh, contributions. Uh, but we've got to continue to support the community college, not only in its operations. As you see a five percent increase of two hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, so that means that on a recurring basis annually, we're spending one, one point two million dollars annually for operation.
Uh, it's about four?
Four?
Yeah, for current expense, this was just the increase, they, they asked for a, 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 you know, four hundred thousand dollar increase just on, on this year, but it, but it's a three, I can't remember.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's pull that number up, what is our contribution to?
Our, our-
They asked for ten percent, that's what they're four million.
Total contribution for Wayne Community, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, right.
Yeah, she's gonna pull it up for us. I mean, I was just dividing back through on the five percent.
Well, yeah, the fi- yeah, the five percent, you know, they asked for four hundred and forty thousand um, uh, for new dollars.
Oh, okay.
So.
What? What ten percent would be?
So we're, so with this budget appropriate, I mean, with this appropriation for next year, the total would be four point six million dollars.
Whoa!
Current expense.
Current expense.
But a lot, a lot of people don't recognize that it comes out of our, our tax dollars. And, and, and again, the key here is, uh, someone can go to the college with, because there's, there's all kinds of programs that, you know, they can basically go to, to, to college and get, you know, certificates and college degrees for much less than what it would be to go to, to other forms of uh, you know, colleges, private or other state-supported. I mean, the other state-supported colleges cannot, you cannot go to them for the, what you can go to any of the community colleges for.
And if, if you ask Mark Pope, uh, Wayne Community College is economic development. Uh, Craig Pope is a director of business and industry is here. Uh, it is economic development because if you don't have the workforce, if you don't have the trained workforce, uh, you're not gonna get a look. So we appreciate the work Craig does, and also the work Craig has done. Uh, uh, really kind of doing some project management for us as well, has just done a fabulous job, and we do appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Uh, again, volunteer fire departments, all fire departments rates uh, remain the same. Uh, we did get asked for an increase uh, from one department, um, but it was above what our maximum rate was, so it was not recommended to be put in the budget. So. All right, here's what you can do on the way out the door. You can tell, uh, uh, one of the things that I would strongly consider and recommend to the board commissioners is place the quarter cent sales tax back on the ballot. We always said, when we did the public informational meetings with the school system, that we had, I think, about thirty-four million dollars worth of needs, they were not wants. There were repairs, there were new schools, there were upgrades, there were all these different projects that needed to be done, remember we had that big poster board? Excuse me? That when we went out and spoke to all groups that would have us, here's a list of needs, not wants. And one of the things we always said was, regardless if you pass the quarter cent or not, my needs are still here. They ain't going nowhere. We've addressed some, but if you take a look at that list, there's a lot we have not addressed. And I would strongly recommend to the board commissioners to place this back on the ballot until it gets passed, because there is definitely a need, uh, that, it, everything takes money. Everything takes money, and, and if you want these things to be repaired, and you want new schools and those type uh, issues, we can't always go back to the well of property taxes. Uh, a- again, the needs are not going anywhere. So again, you can save these things out the door, uh, so just wanted you to be aware. But again, I, I think the biggest thing that the public needs to understand as well is if you purchase a hundred dollars, you're paying six dollars and seventy-five cent now for a sales tax. If the quarter cent goes through, you're paying seven bucks, you're paying twenty-five cents more. So, so twenty-five cents more on every one hundred dollar purchase.
And that's everybody that comes through Wayne County.
Everybody that comes through Wayne County.
When they go to Bud Bash.
Bud Bash.
When they go to the arch thing they have, when they come, anything that we have in town, it's not just residents of Wayne County paying, it's everybody that comes through.
Right.
And it don't make sense to not pass it.
Right. Um, a- again, we, you, we've got needs, they're not wants.
And basically, they're, they're already paying, I mean, you cash register don't break it down to six point seven five, it's rounded up to a penny.
If you go to the dollar-
And, and the money is going to the state, it's not coming back here, you're already paying it for a quarter cent.
If, if you go to, to the dollar menu at, at, at McDonald's, if they still have the dollar menu.
That's a dollar and a quarter now.
Is it? But, but if it's, I, for easy math, you're paying a dollar seven for that hamburger. You're not paying a dollar uh, s- uh, six and three quarters.
Is there any way we can get the sale tax from surrounding counties?
Yes sir. Yes sir.
I'd just like to see what it is.
Oh, 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 oh.
The figure, yeah.
Oh, the figure, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I thought, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Cause I mean, it, it's always good to show citizens that, you know, this is what you're doing when you go over to Wilson.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, I did this.
You go to Raleigh to go out to there, you know what I mean? So you'll know, like, you're paying this in other places, and, and look at how they're moving forward versus, you know, you're not paying it here.
Fifty county, over fifty counts.
I have to research it.
Yeah, the, 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 there's quite a few counties, but no, I'm sorry, I thought you said-
Oh, yeah.
We take the sales-
Because, I mean, I just know when it was on, when it was on before, it wasn't any understanding, it wasn't any information given out on it, it was just quarter cent sales tax, so I know a lot of people that voted against it because, you know, who wants to pay more money?
Right.
You know what I mean, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, so most people are gonna say no. But then if you break it down and kinda sorta give some figures and, and surrounding counties and everything else of what people are doing, and, you know, if you're wanting to move forward, this is in a direction that, that'll help us move forward and help us be able to get some things done, so I just think it's uh, putting information out will always help people in making a, a better decision.
I do have that though, now if you'd like me to move it.
Yeah.
Um, Johnson County's seven point two five.
Lenore County is seven. Uh, Green County is seven. Uh, Dupla is seven. Who am I missing?
Sampson.
Wilson.
Sampson is seven. And Wilson is seven.
Wow, everybody around us is seven already.
I didn't think you could go above seven, so there, so Johnson County's seven and a quarter?
You, you can't go for transportation.
Johnson, Union, there are, there are a few that are above seven, and Beckenburg.
You, you can't go additional for transportation.
There's a total of forty-six counties that have the additional, um, the additional sales tax article, which is called, it's called Article forty-six.
So what is Beckenburg?
Seven and a quarter. Seven and a quarter.
So you said the highest you go, seven and a quarter?
Yeah, but you have to specifically use that additional quarter cent for transportation.
As in?
Their light rail system. Or some public transportation.
I think initially, when this was presented, it was presented where there were a lot of things happening with the educational system here. There was some issues pertaining to funds and money. And I think it was some distrust that this, that these resources wouldn't be used correctly again. I think now we're looking at it a little bit differently and we're seeing that it can be used, you know, we can kind of make sure this money is used in the right way.
But.
And let's say you're already paying it.
But if the board wishes, we can do a whole presentation and look at options at the next meeting as well on the sales tax and, you know, ways to do it and how to get it on the ballot, the whole network.
Well, that statement on the bottom out there pretty much shows people, you know, on a $100 purchase, you're paying 25 cents.
And keep in mind also that the sales tax does not apply to everything. I mean, you've got separate taxes on gas, it doesn't affect gas, there's several, I don't know what they all were. Food, there's several, several things that it doesn't apply to. It really, I wouldn't call them luxury items, but it's things that, you know.
Mr. Huntcutt, I would ask that you do get a presentation together and make that presentation to us at our next meeting. Because this board would, if we in fact are going to put it on the ballot, this board would have to take an action and pass a resolution to that effect. Is that correct?
He was playing Easy Rider out the door when that was.
I know. On your way out the door, make the presentation.
But again, today's a public hearing. After the public hearing, you can pass it anytime between now and June 30. But again, it does need to be passed before July 1, the new budget.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I'm opening the floor up now for comments from the public. Each speaker will have a time limit of four minutes if there was anybody that would like to speak.
No one signed up, sir.
No one signed up. Wow, just nobody signing up. All right. Well, if that's the case, then I close the public hearing. So we're hereby closed. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the budget as presented using $7.7 million in AARP funds is designated and $7.7 million is appropriated from the grant project ordinances and the human relations director is directed to modify the pay schedules and place individual employees where they will be under plans presented by the human resource director to the board of commissioners.
Wow.
My next one?
That was.
That might cool.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote positive for the budget. However, I have some anxiety over what's going on with the increases in capital projects. I know the prices will still go up, but there's gotta be some dudelical from these, other entities are signing contracts. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense what we've been stuck with. And that's my little speech on that. I'm really, really ticked off about this thing.
Kind of expanded on that.
Yeah, you can.
Be easy. We gotta, we gotta have relationships here, so. I think what you were referring to is, I think, everybody on the board, on this board as well as on the school board is appalled at the inflation that has taken place in regards to our projects. Here we had a school that was built meddling several years back, and that was built in the $20 million range. We agreed to go to $23 million on duplicating that for Fremont. Those bids went out and came back, and it's $38 million.
Plus.
Plus. Now, the $38 million are critical dollars needed because we need more schools built in Wayne County. But the cost is almost doubled what it was just a few years back. Inflation is just eating us up and our abilities to actually improve our schools and our other facilities. We are faced with some hard decisions because do we stop progress or do we move forward? And unfortunately, we're having to make a decision in regards to putting additional burden on our taxpayers in order to move forward. And this is hard sitting in these chairs, it really is. Because when you, your decisions affect the daily lives and the finances of families all across Wayne County. So it's a tough thing. I'm sorry, I went too far maybe, but anyway, any other comments?
The 7 point something million in AARP funds, can I get a breakdown on that? I was kind of sort of misunderstanding on that part, like.
It was on one of your slides there.
Well, I'll let her drive.
There it is.
Part of the reasons that it was added to that motion is that we've been told that certain, those funds can be used for certain things. And if the treasury changes their mind, it's exactly what we were going to use. What would decide, can't use those funds.
Okay. Okay. Just making sure.
Those are the ones, AARP funds we talked about.
And again, we believe that we can use these projects, but if we can't, they'll come at you for approval.
I just don't, you know, I know how that kind of sort of operates. I don't like the not knowing for sure. You know what I mean, thing, 'cause, you know what I mean?
But any change what you would have to approve? Yes, sir.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, sir. I too agree with Commissioner Hardeston pertaining to the schools. But the budget overall is a necessary evil. Unfortunately, it has more good in it than negative, so I support it, you know, in regard to that, that it's more good in it than it is negative. So, I mean, we just, we really have to build more of a rapport with our educators and make sure that the contracts, you know, are viable contracts that we all agree upon in the future. I'm hoping we could get there one day. That's all I got. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Just a short one. You know, it appears that one of the sticky points is what it's costing to build a particular school. And our working relationship with the school system right now is the best it's been since I've been on the board. And, you know, they're backed into a corner just like we are. They don't want to spend this money. I mean, there's other schools that they'd rather be spending the money on, but like I say, it's a necessity that they don't have any control over, we don't have any control over. But if we're gonna keep on educating our children, we might have to bite the bullet. I mean, you know, the schools have got to be built and they've got to be maintained. But again, I want to thank the school board for the cooperation that we are. We don't, now, we don't agree on everything, but we've got a much better working relationship right now than we have in the past, ever since I've been on the board. And I'm going on 10 years. I mean, when I first come on this board, I mean, it was, it was a battle. Thank goodness that that board, this board, has seen that, you know, our objective is to educate our children. That's all I have, sir.
Well, I ain't said anything and I won't gonna say nothing, but I'm gonna say something else. We, as a board, have got to be the big person, I guess, in the room to the point of putting forth our leadership positions that we try to work better. We need to put forth the effort that we try to work better with our existing or other boards, i.e. the Board of Education, i.e. the city council. I mean, whatever's happened in the past, a lot of people want to dwell on that. And, you know, I'm kind of one of those people that sometimes I probably let some things go and some things I just harp on. But when it comes to working together, the more you throw darts at somebody, the less they want to talk, talk to you, or the less they want to work with you. So I just, and that's, some of this has got to do with this budget part, as far as the school system thing that we've talked about. I don't like paying, I think the prices are a little high, but it is what it is. I mean, we've got, we've got some, we've got other issues that we've got to deal with. It's just not just the Fremont school, it's the DSS and health, it's the jail and other projects that we've got going on. Everything's gonna be escalated and we've got some hard decisions to make. And we've got to be prudent with the money that we allocate. And we need to kind of hold people to their obligations that they have. So I just, I just ask our board to try to, if we can, to try to, if we have issues, let's talk about it in private.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I want to clarify, I'm not throwing darts at the school board. I have two members here who can tell you I support the school board, but I'm throwing darts at the guy on contract with the Fremont school.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Okay, any other comments?
We probably already said enough, maybe too much.
Yeah. Sorry, man.
I want to remind folks, thank you, Mr. County Manager, for bringing the quarter cent sales tax back. And I look forward to your presentation. Folks, we got to recognize, we got some hard decisions to make and we got two sources of revenue, two sources. Sales tax, property tax. We don't have much control over the sales tax. You as the voters in Wayne County control whether or not we have an increase in our sales tax. Property tax, it's really hard to constantly go to the property owner and say, pay more, pay more, pay more, pay more. So it's, it's some hard decisions that the voters of Wayne County are going to have to make. Two sources of revenue. Any more comments? If not, let's call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. Well.
Unfortunately, you're not.
Well, I think we all knew we really didn't have much choice on that, did we?
Exactly.
All right, we're moving on. Wow, County Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And.
Nope. We didn't finish going through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, you're not ready yet, sir. Yeah, we have to go through Juneteenth.
That was on the consent.
It was on the consent. We did get that on consent, we did do the new business. We got public comments, County Manager's report.
I do want to say, you know, y'all two have made some incredible steps the last couple of years in the projects and your commitment to staff. Nobody likes a tax increase. I don't like to recommend tax increases. I think in my 29, this is my 29th budget, that I have probably recommended a tax increase five times.
Two of them been here. Three of them been here. Forgot.
But we have taken major steps in, with our employees, we've taken major steps with our facilities, we've taken major steps with the services that we provide, we paid major steps for our schools. And I think y'all should be applauded and commended and I appreciate your support as well that you have given all these different groups. Because it really does say a lot and it's not an easy thing to do. But again, you should be commended for taking these really leadership steps moving forward. So I did want to say that. But I do want to remind you, again, lunch today with our municipalities and school board at the Maxwell Center, we will have Reginald Spate, not Ken Allison, who is the USDA Rural Development Director for the state of North Carolina, do a presentation about USDA grants and opportunities for our municipalities. So it's a good opportunity for us to get together and that's all I have at this point.
So you got the head guy from the state coming in?
Yes, sir.
Well, good, good. Okay, Board of Commissioner Committee reports. Mr. Weems?
Just want to remind everybody, Juneteenth, we're having a celebration in Goldsboro, downtown Goldsboro, that's going to be on Saturday, the 18th, I believe. And you can, you can go down to the hub and enjoy the festivities. I think it's gonna be, you know, a great opportunity for people of all races and cultures to experience. So look forward to seeing you down here.
What time?
It's, I think it's gonna be on, I think it's gonna be on 92.7, is that the? And they'll have all the information, I think they've already been advertising it. I'll try to get that to you. So I apologize for not having the correct time. I think by 11 o'clock, I think it's probably till 11 to 4, if I can recall.
Okay, Mr. Hardest?
First of all, I think most people know that we had an incident at the hospital, I think Sunday night, and I'd like to thank the sheriff's department, the hospital staff, Goldsboro Police Department for their quick action in propelling on there. But also I'd like to congratulate the hospital for receiving the American College of Cardiology, National Cardiovascular Data Registry Platinum Award.
Whoa.
That's a mouthful.
That's the highest award that you receive for that. And that being said, that's all.
Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Mr. Barbara A. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to commend the school board and the county commissioners when we had our meeting. I mean, it was a very prosperous meeting. We went over line item by line item. It took, what, about four hours? But I think we come to a conclusion of what could work better for all of us and I want to commend our Mr. Chairman here, he's done a great job and Commissioner A. Cox. I mean, we all worked together and put our head together and come up with a proposal that I think we can work with. But I was really impressed at how we worked together and as a team, as a team, I would underline that because it was a team effort. And thank you very much for that to the school board and to the county commissioners that attended. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gurren?
The last two meetings, I've, I've sat up here and give a report on the transportation projects and said they were gonna be starting in May, said they're gonna be starting in April and they ain't started yet. So I ain't saying nothing else. It's like when the Lord comes back, you better be ready because they're coming your way. The next thing is, in our decisions as leaders and former leaders, sometimes we make short-term decisions that become long-term issues. And we need to keep that in mind when we, on decisions that we make sitting here. Just my quick figuring, we were talking about spending somewhere in the neighborhood, probably... of probably 100-plus million dollars in a few projects that we're talking about doing at the present time. And some, if, if, and this is all relative to the tax rate, if we'd have left the tax rate where it was at way back in the day, which was about 10 or 12 years ago, we would have, with revenue neutral and everything, we would have somewhere a little more than 100 million dollars to fund those projects. So keep that in mind. I'm not saying we want to go up on taxes anymore, but I'm just saying, keep that in mind because your revenue stream has to support your infrastructure. And that's, just looking at it, I mean, there is a point that you've got to stay at. The being, I've always, kind of my motto is be proactive instead of reactive. Look, look for the future, look long-term, because when you start be, becoming reactive, it starts costing you money. Commissioner Foster said something at last meeting, I think it was, and I've thought about it ever since he said it. He said, "Our job, sitting in this seat, whether we're here next term or not, is to leave it better than it was to leave this seat, or whoever's sitting in this seat, in a better position than what we were presented when we become commissioners." Last thing is, and I've asked Craig and Chip a couple of weeks ago, I said, "We, we really need to, to concentrate on the quarter cent sales tax." And I appreciate you, you bringing that up. And like I say, you know, education is probably the biggest thing, but as it sits right now, it's going to produce about 2.8 to 2.9 million dollars just on that quarter cent. Right, that's the projection. And I think the last time it was like 2.3 to 2.4.
That range.
Somewhere in that range. So just imagine, you know, $3 million extra a year, because you figure it's just going to keep going north as people spend more and more, as we get more people in. I asked Barry to, to give me some statistics on subdivisions and Platts and all. It's unbelievable, the amount of lots that have been recorded in Wayne County. This probably won't be a popular thing, but in 2010, and I've said this before, in 2010, for every dollar we brought in in residential revenue, it costs us $1.27 to provide the services on residential. On every dollar we bring in in commercial, it costs us 60 cent to provide the services. Now, we are referred to as a bedroom community. There's got to be a, there's got to be a, a, a level, a happy medium, because if you're all bedroom and no commercial, you start getting what we, what we've looked at today. We're starting to, it's starting to hit the property owners more and more because it's costing us more for the bedrooms than it is the industry. So we need to concentrate on evening out. We don't want to have all industry and no people. We need to, we need to have a happy medium. And, and I think our Economic Development Department, I think, is doing a fantastic job. I know sometimes we get a little perturbed with some, but overall, I think we're actually doing a good job in that. We've got several prospects, just through personal contacts, that, that, that I've had over the years, that people want to come, and that's something that I think we need to concentrate on, is providing our infrastructure, getting our infrastructure to the point that we can attract more industry, i.e. the sewer. And that sewer needs to be geared more toward economic development as in industry, which will accommodate the more cluster-type, smaller subdivision or lots. So, so I don't want to say a whole lot today, and I always do opposite, so I'm done.
Vice Chair.
Oh, I do have one more thing, I'm sorry. One more thing. To add on to what Commissioner Hardeston said, the North Carolina Highway Patrol responded from every, from our county and every county around us to that incident at the hospital. So we want to tell them, thank you. They're a major asset to, to our county. We've always had a great worker relationship with them. Talked to Sergeant Dorsey. He said he, he come in from vacation from West Palm Beach, said his bags down, and the phone rung. He said, "I couldn't leave," he said, "'cause I had a beard." He said, "I had to shave before I come out." But he, he was there within probably 25 minutes, and, and we appreciate their response as well, sir.
Can I make one, one more follow-up on that? I'm sorry.
We're going to get to you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public service announcement. I've heard several people say that when they heard it, they went out to the hospital to see what was going on. Folks, stay home. It's a law enforcement issue. Why put yourself in jeopardy? Please do not go out to these events.
Good point. Vice Chairman Acock?
Thank you. Commissioner Hardeston and Commissioner Gurley's already stole a part of my thunder, but, but on the hospital, as had already been said, I'd like to thank the Goldsboro Police Department, kind of took the lead on it because it was in the city, the Sheriff's Department was there to back them up. Also, Johnson County Sheriff's Department had personnel responding, and as Commissioner Gurley said, Highway Patrol, I mean, they were, they're, they're, they're an asset that a lot of people don't realize, because when you have, and it's very unfortunate what happened at the hospital, you know, we, we've said, you know, if it's, it really, it's not if it's going to happen, when is it going to happen? Well, Sunday night it happened to us. It was unfortunate, thank goodness it was no worse than it was, but the Highway Patrol brought, brought, brought people in from every adjoining county. And like I said, Johnson County Sheriff's Department had personnel underway. It was, the hospital staff did a fantastic job, the Sheriff's Department, they had, they had the big guns out, I mean, and, and thank goodness that it was no worse than it was. Very unfortunate for the family that was involved, but I'd like to commend our people, on the city and county and other agencies that come in for a fantastic job. Our OS department was on top of it coordinating a lot of things. Joe did a fantastic job on handling the press because it was very shortly after it started unfolding out there. You can, you can imagine what the news media was, they were, they were, they were wanting interviews and all, and Joe handled it professionally. I don't think there was a whole lot of on-camera stuff going on. I just want to thank everybody that was involved in that. Also, we all know, folks is dry in Wayne County. Our fire departments, our paid departments, and our volunteer departments are, are stretched out right now, because it wouldn't call right after another, with woods fires and grass fires and, so everyone be careful how you strike your matches, because they're, they're really stretched out right now. Yesterday was a very important day for this nation. Yesterday was the 78th anniversary of D-Day. It was the beginning of the end for World War II. There's a lot of men and women sacrificed so much, a lot of them sacrificed their life for us to have the freedom that we have in this country today, and the freedom that it gave back to a lot of other countries. Sometimes we try to forget history or erase history, and events like this, you cannot erase. My father-in-law was a part of D-Day. He did come home, but he come home with injuries, and it probably sent him to his grave early than normal. Just, we cannot forget what those, what those men and women sacrificed for us to have what we have in this country today. And we still have many women that's doing the same thing today, not to the magnitude that, that World War II was, but, you know, World War I was supposed to be the big war that ended all wars, and it didn't. And World War II won't be the last, but we've already been engaged in other, other things all over the world. And, and again, we need to keep our men and women that send uniforms now in our firsts, all of our first responders, because we live in very difficult times right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My comments are basically, 5%. 5% is basically what we increase property taxes. But this county has to buy gas, this county has to buy food, this county has to buy building materials, and we all know firsthand that they say the inflation rate is 8.5%. I said, "they say," because we all know that gas has gone up 100% or more, lumber's gone up dramatically, all the materials have gone up, food has gone up dramatically, and it's definitely more than 8.5%, but somehow or another, they come up with 8.5. I think this board was very judicious of being able to minimize this impact to 5%. Nobody wants tax increases, nobody. But it's the state of the nations that we're living in now, and that is, we are definitely in an inflationary time. And governments have got to pay for goods and services as well as individuals. So at any rate, I commend the board for a unanimous vote on it. We all were very concerned about it, are having to do it, but it was one of those things that we had to. That said, we are wanting to go back into closed session for the purpose of.
For the sake reason you went in earlier.
Okay, do I have a motion? We go in closed session. All right, so move. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much. We're back in session. And? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion?
We have, yes, we have a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve our next county commissioner.
County manager.
County manager, I apologize. Our county manager. That's my motion.
To be?
Chip Crumpler.
To be Chip Crumpler. We need to stay down. At a stated salary of? Anything further on the motion that we would need? Effective?
June 30th. At midnight.
I direct your attorneys to provide, to prepare a contract.
And prepare our attorneys to, to prepare a contract.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Here and now, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And that is unanimous. We have a new county manager, effective June 30th at midnight. Okay, and I believe that we are going to have a proclamation read on Jun- Juneteenth.
Thank you. Whereas Juneteenth commemorates the day freedom was proclaimed to all slaves by Union General Gordon Cragger on June 19th, 1865, in Galveston, Texas, more than two and a half years after the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln. And whereas, former slaves in Texas began to observe June 19th as the anniversary of the emancipation and coined the term "Juneteenth." And whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest national celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States, and is also known as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, Emancipation Day, and African-American Independence Day. And whereas, Juneteenth commemorates the survival, strength, and determination of African-Americans through extreme adversity, hardships, and triumph, and today emphasizes African-Americans' education, culture, art, history, and achievements. And whereas, the 19th of June, along with the 4th of July, completes the cycle of freedom for Independence Day observances in America. And whereas, 47 states and the District of Columbia and Wayne County recognize the 19th day of June as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States, and to demonstrate racial reconciliation and healing from the legacy of slavery. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioner does hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, and Wayne County and command, commend its observance to all citizens adopted this day, 7th day of June, 2022.
We have a motion on the floor that we approve the resolution. Oh, we already have, I'm sorry. We have done, we have done. Okay, anything further? That said, we are in recess to our next meeting.